All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star-Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Borough, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. May I have a roll call, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Duggan?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson? And Mr. Reimer. Thank you. Can we rise for the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. O'Donnell, would you read our mission statement for us tonight?
I would love to. Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the June 26 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
My motion in the second is ready to discussion. Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please? Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Obstain.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Obstain.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have five items of correspondence, as noted on the agenda, and with that, we will move right into the superintendent report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes and everybody. For our mission moment tonight, I'm actually going to turn it over in a moment to Mrs. Kandalazi Hayid and several of our supervisors who are here tonight, who are going to be presenting on personalization through our comprehensive program. And I'll say a couple of words now, and then what I'll do is I'll ask us to move down to the first couple of rows, just so that we can give the presentation its full view. So, a big, really big, curricular program like ours can really go in one of two different ways. It can try to put a course out there for every single student interest under the sun, and that's one way that we can go, and anytime there's an interest, we have a new course. The other way, and this is where personalization really comes into play, is by allowing students to follow their passions, follow their strengths, mitigate their weaknesses toward their goals and aspirations in every course. So that's a different sort of mandate for us, but we see it as one that can rejuvenate schools, because schools aren't often structured in that way. Now, the areas that we're going to be hearing about tonight are ones that in the past have been dismissed as, quote, "electives," and Jessica knows I don't like using that word, not just because it's factually incorrect. Students have to take courses in what we used to call "practical arts." They've got to take five credits, and they also have to take five credits in fine and performing arts. So this is required. However, we sometimes use that term "electives." What we find, though, in these subject areas is, this is where students quite often find their vocation. They find their calling, and so we're very pleased to be able to offer multiple courses and multiple magnet programs and other things in these areas. So Jessica and her supervisor have been stalwart supporters of, and stalwart partners in efforts to support personalization in our program. You've seen a drastic increase over the past couple of years in dual enrollment programs. You've seen magnet and academy programs coming in, specialized magnet programs, and much more. And a lot of that comes from turning those key decisions over to our staff to really wrestle with those tough questions about how to create personalization in the classroom, rather than sort of dictate it through the program. How do individual teachers and the folks who work directly with our students create it each and every day in the classroom? And I'll just remind before we step down that personalization's one of those three cornerstones that we've talked about in our strategic framework, and Jessica will talk more about that as well. But personalization, equity, service, learning, those are the three things that when you blend our mission priorities of wellness, powerful learning, and partnerships, you get thrusts for us as we move forward to do this kind of work. So in all of that, again, I believe brings us to really true engagement that at the end of the day is not just good news for schools, but good news for our students and for their well, for our future. So Jessica, I'm going to ask you to take it away as we move down to the first two rows over here, and if we can drop the screen as well.
Sorry, sorry.
We can figure it out. We'll get there.
I know.
Well, I'm just preparing. Jessica, we have Mrs. Lucas and Ms. Armelino.
Yes. Okay. Oh, wait. Okay. This is very nice. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here this evening to present to you. I'm here with my curriculum and instruction colleagues. So we have, they're kind of behind me, it's a little awkward, but Mrs. Rebecca Lucas, Mrs. Jean Armelino, Mr. Chuck Roberto. And as you know, throughout the year, we've been presenting about individual departments to the Board. We wanted to take a different approach for our remaining departments, because these departments, as Dr. Moore just so eloquently explained, they really add so much to our comprehensive program, particularly in the areas of student choice and exploration. So tonight, we're going to discuss our program and instructional experiences through the lens of personalization. Now. It's coming. You didn't miss, this is just the title slide, so you didn't miss anything huge yet. It's going.
It was on.
It's thinking. I can hold it up. I can, would you like me to still continue? We'll continue. Okay. So I'm going to build on what Dr. Moore was talking about. So personalization has been an emerging theme, and more importantly, a focal point or a thrust, as he said, for us as we begin to look at the next phase of our strategic plan. Dr. Moore has shared the graphic that will appear soon, hopefully before this graphic. It will come into focus soon. And there you're going to see our three strategic priorities: powerful learning, wellness, and partnership. And then at the intersections, you're going to see the focus areas or the thrusts, so equity, personalization, and service. And tonight, again, we will be highlighting personalization. So personalization is the combination or intersection of powerful learning and wellness. It's the path in education that takes into account the specific strengths, interests, and needs of each student, and creates a unique learning experience based on those individual traits. Our presentation tonight will highlight art, broadcast technologies, business, family and consumer science, music, and TED departments, and the IMC through a common lens of personalization. So before we hear from our supervisor team behind me, I wanted to just take a moment to look at all the courses in those departments tonight. As you can see, it's quite a few, and I know I am breaking all sorts of presentation rules by having this, but we thought one short and sweet slide, so you could see the courses and the kind of breadth of experience would bring a lot to the presentation. So we are a comprehensive high school, as you know, and much of our student experience is with coursework in less standardized and constrained areas, as Dr. Moore said. And by this, we mean that there's different and less specific graduation requirements than there are for departments like English and math. In New Jersey, students must take five credits in visual and performing arts and five credits in what is now called 21st Century Life and Career, previously known as practical arts. Unlike math, where there are specific course requirements for graduation, such as Algebra I and Geometry, the Department of Education allows for students to choose courses that fall within these credit requirements. This provides much more choice for students and variation in how to fulfill their graduation requirements. Beyond this, though, as Dr. Moore said before, we find that these courses really allow students to explore possible areas of interest, as well as to pursue areas of passion. Due to the breadth of the coursework, we will not have time to discuss each course that you see up here. However, we wanted you to have an idea of what each department holds in the courses that are available, and if you are interested in learning more about courses, everything is available online on our program of studies. And the courses that have asterisks have dual enrollment agreements, and you'll hear a little bit more about that. So I will now hand it over to Mrs. Rebecca Lucas to talk about personalization through our programmatic structures. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So I'm going to talk a little bit about personalization through programmatic decisions. So as you can see from Jessica's last slide, we have a large amount of courses from which to choose, and we also offer courses at different levels. So what this does is it allows our students to personalize their learning experiences, which is what Dr. Moore had been talking about earlier. And if you look again at that very large list of courses, you also see some courses, as Jessica said, with an asterisk. So these courses are dual enrollment courses, and we have them in every department that you see up there. So not only does dual enrollment allow students to get college credit, which we're all very familiar with, while still in high school, dual enrollment also helps grow student confidence. They begin to feel that they are college-capable in an area that they're really passionate about. So I think that that is also a positive of dual enrollment that isn't normally talked about, but which we talk about quite often in our departments. Students may like to take a variety of courses from different departments, or they may choose to, what you might say, specialize in a particular area. So for example, a student may take craft and design, which is the introduction in the art department. Then they might continue to choose multiple courses in the art department, and they might finish with AP Art and Design. But conversely, you might have a student who really doesn't know what they might be interested in. So they can take a wide variety of courses, and what that does is it allows our students to try out what they think might interest them. And this is where our 2.5 credit courses really come into play. They're a great tool for students who are looking to cultivate their interests. So they may take an elective, well, what we don't like to call anymore, but they may take one in the fall for 2.5 credits, and they may say, "Well, maybe I'm not interested in that," or maybe they may be more interested in, then they may choose to take another 2.5 credit course in the spring. So our accessibility, our courses are accessible to all students. And one way that we talk about accessibility is how students can kind of jump into our courses. So some students may begin with an intro course, or they may actually take a more advanced course, and this is open to them, because for the most part, we've removed the barriers for courses for prereqs. So we don't have prereqs in most of our courses anymore, except where they build on one another, where you really need that foundational knowledge in order to move to the next course. Again, the 2.5 credit course works really well here for accessibility, because it enables students to take multiple courses in a particular department within the year, and it also helps support students to follow their passion or interest. And then our inclusivity of our curriculum. Many of these courses are mixed grade level. So what that does is that allows our students to build a community based on interest, not just on their grade level. We've also have, most of these courses are open to freshmen, so that also then gives our freshman students and our sophomore students the ability to get to know some of our upperclassmen, learn from their experience, and it also builds community and wellness when you have a group of students who know one another through their passion. We have Team and Pals courses that support students. It supports them through their mentoring and their collaboration, and this takes place with students who may not normally have ever been in the same class together, ever. So it's a really great experience for our students, and it's extremely inclusive. Traditionally, our students, most students, especially teenagers, they may have some reservations about taking a specialized class like interior design, but our course curricula welcomes students of all levels, because they have the choice to base their projects and their learning on the way that our curriculum is designed. So our curriculum is focused mostly on the learning process and not so much on the product. So this way, students have a safe environment in which to learn about themselves and what they might be interested in. So at this time, Ms. Armelino will share the next slide with you. Thank you. There you go. You're welcome.
Hi. So I'm going to talk a little bit about our learning experiences and assessment in the classroom, and how that is personalized for our students. As just noted in the introduction, the courses that we're discussing are, actually do meet state graduation requirements for either visual and performing arts or 21st Century Life and Careers, and all students are required to take five credits in each of those areas. But many of our students that will enroll in our courses are actually exploring an area of interest, or perhaps they've already discovered that they have a passion in that area and they want to explore it further. We emphasize hands-on, real-world experiences, often in a project-based format. Student creativity is an essential part of the learning, especially in courses such as interior and fashion design, architecture, and art. Both learning and assessment are accomplished through tasks designed to encourage exploration while exposing students to content that covers the learning standards for the course. So our introductory courses tend to be a bit more structured, although student choice is offered when possible in those courses. For example, in culinary lab, students get to choose what they're making for their final project. So that gives them a chance to perhaps customize a recipe a little bit, or choose to make something that they're interested in. In courses further along in a sequence, students work more and more independently on projects of their own choosing. So a couple of examples that jump out here are culminating courses in art and engineering. Students who take portfolio prep compile and complete work that demonstrates their skills and interests in art, while in engineering, too, students use the skills that they've learned over the courses that they've taken to build actual things that they're going to use. So a couple of examples of projects that were done by engineering two students this year include a custom-designed drone, which they cut out on our CNC machine from carbon fiber. Another group of students made enhancements to an adjustable podium that was developed by students in a prior year, and a wooden drum was built by a student, and it is currently in use at drum corps practice at camp this week. So very excited to see really nice results on a lot of these projects. In addition to classroom assessment, our classes incorporate opportunities to make student work visible to broader audiences in our community and beyond. This visibility encourages students to strive to complete their best work and allows people outside the school to see what our students can do. There are examples of this in many of the departments that we are discussing, and I'm going to highlight a few here. You'll also see photos and videos on this slide that provide some visuals for some of the things that I'm mentioning. In business, stock market investing students competed in a stock market game with students across the country. Art students put on multiple showcases and submitted work to competitions soliciting student work on mental health and gun violence. Music students put on both large and small group performances, and family and consumer science students created and delivered preschool lessons to our Little Devils preschoolers. Robotics students who participated in our first robotics team worked with and competed against students from other schools in what first terms their friendly co-operation. These examples are not an exhaustive list, but a representative sampling of the types of things that are happening in our classes. And I'm going to turn it over to Chuck Roberto.
Thank you. Jean spoke about classroom experiences that provide practice for real-life scenarios. In addition to those, there are opportunities for students to gain actual real-life experience in areas for which they have a passion. Each year, the Central Hub provides practical experience working at a help desk for students with an interest in technology. They learn to repair hardware, to image computers, and to inventory parts, and make us adults aware of when we need to restock. They also provide a unique and practical perspective on some of the issues students experience with technology on campus. For those who have a passion for technology, the internship can lead to after-school and summer work where more responsibility is experienced. And that's not the only place on campus where student interest can lead to an internship. In the TED department, interns help to organize and inventory equipment and help younger students in their classes. Opportunities are available in the IMC and in counseling as well. Of course, those opportunities are for students who have room in their schedule to take advantage of them. Even though four years seems like it should be enough time for a student to pursue all of their interests within their schedules, some students have such varied interests that it is not possible. For these students, there are opportunities that exist outside the class schedule. You're aware of the many extracurricular and co-curricular opportunities here at the school that have been covered previously by Scott Cohen. There is a place at this school, even beyond those areas, for students to participate in activities and learn more about areas of personal interests at Hundred and Central. Students can join Future Business Leaders of America, even if business classes do not fit in their schedule. Students interested in art but cannot fit classes in their schedule can be part of the Cartoon Club, Central Mural Arts, or just go to an art room during lunch. Students without time in their schedule for a music class can still participate in fiddle club, jazz band, chorale, noteworthy, or madrigals. Although there is a close affiliation with the work completed in class, students can be on the robotics team without actually taking robotics class. At the beginning of the 22-23 school year, the media specialists surveyed students to see what they would like to do to make it their maker space. Many of the Maker Monday and holiday activities were planned as a result of this survey, but beyond that, we learned that students just wanted time in the maker space to plan and create. So the maker space was made open during unit lunch and Block 5 for students, giving them time to work on personal projects. Students responded by showing up every day, often with every seat in the maker space being filled, and students helped each other to design and create. The projects that were engineered and created in this time were amazing. You may have noticed in one of the pictures shown in this video, one of the students created a set of working wings, which is pretty amazing. Whether it be through programmatic choices, learning experiences in classes, or extended opportunities, it is our goal for each of the 2,545 students to have their own personal experience at Hundred and Central. That concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time. Any questions?
Yes, those are courses that we do our general education with our special education students, so it's a group of about 10 and 10. And I think Mrs. Lucas alluded to this, that traditionally, those students would not be placed in a course together, and so we're doing that to increase our access for both students and the inclusivity as well. So together, everyone achieves more. You're probably familiar with that acronym for TEAM, but we've now expanded, it started in, I want to say it started in family and consumer science, but we've expanded it to as many of the departments as we can now.
I have a question, a comment. Somebody really important points out here in everything that you presented, the personalization lens. I really, I love that. This gives us a good look at all the work that's being done, but we don't, we're not aware of, or not here to see it all. I'm just really, really impressed with how much is being done, and why departments are offering so many scholarships to so many.
Thank you. We wish we could highlight them all. There's so many, there really are, but we tried to give a good overview and a good, even distribution between all the different departments.
How do we, what sort of metrics do you have around these two classes? I mean, we can see test scores are designed. So how do we measure which courses are being effective and where we want to put more resources?
There, I mean, we still grade in those courses. We don't grade with standardized tests. I mean, much like our regular classes, you know, even in math, which does have those standardized assessment components to it, we are still doing other sorts of summative assessments, so not just like a multiple-choice test, so to speak. But we really put the emphasis on projects and problem-based learning in there, and with that comes scoring rubrics, more holistic means of scoring. And it's not just necessarily on the project, the final product itself. So much, and especially in the visual and performing arts, the standards have changed, where the emphasis is actually on the design process and not the end product. So there are different iterations along the way that we're hitting to see, you know, what's your first step? What was your initial planning period? And there's a grade for that based on a rubric. Then, okay, how did you put it into action? You know, then there's a grade for that. So we look at grades for that, but then we also do follow enrollment trends to see, you know, is enrollment flying up? Are the course requests for the next school year flying up somewhere, and is that an indication that we need to add a second level or a third course, or whatever it may be? And similarly, if we see it declining over the course of a few years, then we need to look into why. So recently, we added a dual enrollment in our web design courses, and we noticed that the enrollment was changing. And we found out that in the introductory course, we actually needed to change our curriculum a little bit. It had, in terms of web design, web design has advanced since when the curriculum was first developed. So it's things like that that we do. So that's maybe not a metric, but it's more in aligning with looking at the enrollment that is projected in the course, and then looking at our dual enrollment partners and their curriculum as well.
Just a quick thought, you mentioned dual enrollment. Dual enrollment puts us under certain kinds of requirements as well, from those post-secondary institutions. So there's some accountability to them to maintain those agreements, but what we've been talking a lot more about also is just the community partnerships, bringing people in from the community to help us understand whether or not what's going on in those classes is aligned to what's going on in the world and where we need to close those gaps.
Yes.
Similar to your development example. So there are state standards, but there aren't necessarily tests, so we've got to find these other ways to measure it by looking to experts in post-secondary community organizations. So that's where we're starting to evolve.
Thank you. Go ahead, Keen.
I've heard a comment that the maker space is heavily used almost all the time. Do we need to consider, is there conversations going on about whether that's a bottleneck, if that's limiting, you know, students and their abilities, and if we can expand the space where the time is available?
Yes, that's an excellent question. So it's used tremendous amount of time, and it really is full at lunch, it's like standing room only in there, and similarly, many times in Block 5. One of the things we have done is purchased some of the equipment that's in there. We've actually made additional purchases of that equipment for our TED courses, because they were using it, and it is actually integrated into the curriculum. So I won't say that TED has its own maker space, so to speak, but it has the same equipment so that they don't have to go down to the maker space. They can replicate and use that equipment in their own facilities. All right. Thank you very much.
Back up here?
Yes, papers.
Rebecca, do you still have the remote?
I do.
But thank you, thank you, Jessica and Jessica and Jean.
Thanks. Just to piggyback on what Mrs. Kandalazi Hayid was talking about, our life skills classroom is under renovation now. That project began to provide much more authentic life skills opportunities for our programs in special education, so that's moving along. What we've seen, you know, we've increased the seating throughout campus to make a more welcoming environment by taking out some of the lockers here and there and creating those bench seating areas. Classes and students will use those spaces, not just during lunch, but during class time as well, to break out into small groups. In the 910 building, two very long hallways are now, you know, the lockers have been pulled out, and that project is underway as well. And that's not only going to have an impact on availability of seating during lunch, but also to give just a better, sort of more collaborative air to the whole campus up there. Those unused lockers pulled out and made into bench seating. And not so exciting as a personalization project, but the... And not so exciting as a personalization project, but the, the Media Center parking lot repaving is going, going well as well. So, that's, that's on schedule and may actually be done this week potentially. Yeah. That's why we're in this room tonight, by the way. Now, transportation is also busy over the summer, meeting the needs of our summer programs, not just ours, but also Flemington, Raritan, and some others. I do want to remind that we are going to be speaking, I mentioned this last meeting, we're going to be speaking with the township about a, a transportation issue, Raritan Township, about a transportation issue that continues to be thorny for us. We were disappointed when the, the new developments went in within walking distance of campus, that they weren't equipped with sidewalks and that there wasn't, there weren't necessarily steps taken to ensure safe walking passage to campus. And, you know, case law and, and other requirements make it clear that that really is the purview of the municipality. So, we had thought we were in a good place last year with some arrangements to offer some subscription busing to our students who are living over there. That didn't pan out in the way that we'd hoped. So, we may be in a position of requiring the families to have to pay for the subscription busing in that neck of the woods right over there by Costco. But we're going to continue to talk with the township about that, and hopefully, we can avoid that unfortunate contingency. Still, though, very thankful, always thankful, and ever ready to assist our partners at Raritan Township. The board knows, but I just want to make sure we're going to be communicating to the community as well. This Friday and Friday, August 4th, we're going to be closing campus to allow the Raritan Township Police Department to do some training on campus. And so, rather than contend with all of the distractions that that will cause, we'll have some folks kind of working on the edges of campus. We'll have some folks maybe working from home. But we're going to close campus to make room for them to do their training. They, yeah, there may be emergency vehicles on campus. That's one of the things we want to alert, alert everybody to, is that they may see some emergency vehicles on campus this coming Friday and then Friday, the 4th. So, I'll have more information on that as we get closer, and we'll have some communication out to the community. If we didn't already, I'm not sure if that went out yet, Mr. Brandt, but I know it's scheduled to go out soon. Yep. And that's it. On staffing, I just want to let you know that we're on schedule. We've been successful in finding qualified and excited candidates for all of our openings. We have just one more opening that we're looking to fill in the teaching ranks, and I, I believe that we'll have a finalist to bring to you in August. So, we'll be able to close that position. And we are continuing to work as a county group with my colleagues in other districts with the Educational Services Commission on a countywide recruitment arm to help us not only broaden the pipeline of teachers into Hundred and County and other educational staff, but also to help us meet our, our workplace diversity goals. So, we've been sharing, I think last month, the ESC approved the position. We're going to have a posting out there soon. We're just working on some draft posting language that we're sharing with some partners, including the NAACP and others, to ensure that we're clear and welcoming in our message about the, the goals of, of this countywide recruitment position. Organizational items, well, let me go through HIBs and suspension report. You'll see 2223 is repeated here because we had one or two updated numbers for June, and then we're on moving into July through June of '24, July 23 through June of '24. Under organizational items, we do have two HIBs that we presented in closed session last time, and we also have a new staff member in the Counseling Department who's being identified as a member of our Anti-Bullying Specialists Team to work on HIBs. So, we're just relisting the whole motion and highlighting her as a new staff member to join that, to join that team. And with that, Mrs. Hughes, I thank you all. Thank you, Mrs. Cangelosie-Hade and crew for your wonderful presentation and certainly the good work that you all do.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, and everyone. With that, we'll move into our first residence forum for action items on the agenda. If you'd like to speak, you could have five minutes, come up to the mic, state your name and residency, and you'll get a warning at four minutes with an additional one minute to remain. Nope. Okay. On the organizational items, can I have a motion, please, to affirm the administration disposition on HIBs 32 and 34?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Are these from the last meeting?
They are. Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Abstain.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And, yeah, I'm going to just get through our motions. Can I have a motion, please, to approve Christina Ferguson for the 2324 officials for the Anti-Bullying Specialists?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Before we move into committee reports, did somebody in the audience have a question?
Sorry, can you understand what you said, we will tell them on the line?
Yes. We have two residence forums. The first is for only items that are for vote on the agenda. Then, we go through our committee reports, and then afterwards, we have a public comment session for general comments. So, that first one was just for items on the Whatever is on the agenda for vote here can be spoken, can be spoken to in the first residence forum. You could also speak in the second residence forum also, but the first one is dedicated exclusively to items that are for vote tonight by the board.
I wondered where that could fit into the prior one. It can also fit into our second one.
Yeah. If you'd like to come speak, you can come speak. Sure, you can come speak now. Sure.
Hi, I'm Teresa Malia, and I'm from Raritan Township.
Okay. Can you just sign your name? I think there should be a piece of paper up there.
There is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you start speaking, Miss Malia, I just want to remind the audience that this is, the board, board does not respond to comments, particularly personnel items.
My name is Teresa Malia, and I've been asked to read this letter to you. It's regarding Tango versus Jeffrey Moore and the Department of Ed at all. Our file number is 01148. Dear Mrs. Dionella, as you're aware, this firm represents Paul Tango in the reference matter. Our client just received a letter from the Superintendent, Dr. Moore, also a defendant in our lawsuit, which advises that the board will be considering punishment of Mr. Tango related to the exercise of his free speech, which is the subject of the lawsuit. Please note that Mr. Tango waives confidentiality and demands that this letter be read to the public as his response to Dr. Moore's frivolous and, we allege, illegal actions against Mr. Tango. Dr. Moore has assessed Mr. Tango as being guilty, as charged, of the fictitious crime against Dr. Moore's transgender beliefs. Dr. Moore also has determined that Mr. Tango must be reeducated as part of the punishment that Dr. Moore wishes to assess against Mr. Tango. Finally, we allege that Dr. Moore misstates facts to support this letter. Dr. Moore's letter, we suggest, smacks of totalitarianism and constitutes admissions of illegal activities which only enhance Mr. Tango's legal claim against the district and Dr. Moore. Please be advised that Mr. Tango and this firm absolutely reject the notion that Mr. Tango may be subjected to any punishment whatsoever. Mr. Tango has always acted in keeping with his responsibilities and with the United States and New Jersey constitutions and laws. Moreover, Mr. Tango has not violated any board policy and has never been the subject of a negative review. Instead, Mr. Tango plainly is being disciplined and punished because he is not perceived as being in lockstep with Dr. Moore's transgenderism beliefs. Mr. Tango is being accused of improperly taking a photograph of a public display in the school on March 10th, 2023, and sharing it by email. Many others also photographed the display, which apparently includes staff members who on March 6th, 2023, photographed the display with students in the foreground and then posted such photographs on Instagram. We assume that the staff members or members who took such photograph and shared it on social media have not been punished in any way, shape, or form. Yet, Mr. Tango, who did not include students in his photograph, which he always admitted taking, and did not ever post the same on social media or otherwise publish it in a public forum of any kind, is being punished. Plainly, the only reason that Mr. Tango is being punished is because Dr. Moore disagrees with Mr. Tango's opinions about the propriety of including photographs of men in a woman's history month display. Dr. Moore suggests that Mr. Tango's actions reflect that Mr. Tango's personal beliefs are interfering with his employment obligations. However, no evidence of the same exists. Contrarily, Dr. Moore's singular obsession with his personal transgender belief and the enforcement of those beliefs has led him to punish, bully, and harass staff, students, board members, and the general public when he perceives that they do not adhere to his personal beliefs or may not adhere to his beliefs, which he seeks to make compulsory among staff, students, and citizens generally. As alleged in Mr. Tango's federal lawsuit and in so acting, Dr. Moore's actions constitute a violation of the First Amendment Establishment Clause, whereas Dr. Moore expresses suspicious concerns that Mr. Tango's taking a photograph may lead to lawsuits against the district for discrimination, Dr. Moore's obsessive-compulsive enforcement of his personal transgender rights beliefs has actually resulted in lawsuits against the district. Demand is made that Mr. Tango immediately be reinstated with a normal increase and that he be provided with the opportunity to perform summer work of which he has been deprived. Finally, we commend you to the United States Supreme Court recent decision in 303 Creative LLC versus Alanis 2023 Lexis 2794 1923, which details the robust manner in which First Amendment rights must be protected against state actors who would punish those whose speech they dislike. The ongoing violation of such principles by Dr. Moore and the board is duly noted and shall lead to further appropriate legal action, as is necessary to preserve Mr. Tango's rights. Please be guided accordingly. Very truly yours, Ronald A. Baruti.
Beach.
Good evening, Mr. Vargas. Will you be speaking on an agenda item?
Yes, I am. Paul Tango. It's interesting that I knew the young woman who was attacked during the, the rally, but I also know Paul Tango. It's hard to read when I listen to that letter, when it talked about the safety of students. Paul Tango had spent over 20 years protecting students as a police officer at Rutgers University. I can tell you that at the heart of Paul Tango is protecting people. What he did, from what I understand, did not harm or threaten students. However, there are real things that are going on here. When I even go back to where a student was attacked at the rally, or where things that are going on, when we looked at the, some of the, the stations that are going on, one of the things that Ms. O'Donnell had written a note before she was elected or adjourned to board, which was very critical of people like me, and she has a right to do that. But she also mentioned that we were talking about people who would be grooming, and grooming didn't happen. And I told you at the last board that last year, 349 teachers were found convicted, not charged, convicted of sexual harassment to students, right? When I was sitting at the State Board of Education, a young man got upset. He was openly gay, that's fine. But he said, you know, people should not be, the students should not be involved with parents. Parents should be, be, not be involved in these things because they, they, parents don't know what they're doing. Well, he could have been a good guy. He could have been somebody that was touched by, he, what he went through with his own sexuality, or he could have been a predator. Okay? We don't know. And those are the things that are open in saying that there's no predatory thing in the sex standards. Those things are open. Some of the other things that, that, that people are coming up, we talk about transgender issues. There's a lot of support for people who want to follow that route, and we should support and never threaten those type of people. However, there's a lot of support for moving that way, but no support for pulling back. My niece went through, she considers herself non-binary. She bounded her, her breasts for many years. She had her breasts removed. She worked with her family. She goes by a male name. She changed everything. It did not fix her problem. She spent 30 days in a mental hospital way after all this stuff was done. There are real threats to students, and they're here, and they need to be addressed. Paul Tango is one of them.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Do you have anyone else who would like to speak to items on the agenda? Okay, thank you. With that, we'll close the first public session, and we will move right into committee reports. Mr. Davidson, do you have an update on student life and program?
Yes. We met on the 11th, and we have 10 items tonight, is it 10 or 11, that need action. The first is Special Services Department is reviewing, as they do every year, school placements and tuition arrangements for children going out of district, and these are listed. The second is item for us was the North Hundred and Voorhees District students that want to take ELL in our district. And we are approving the students and the, and the charges that we will be paid for those students. And we have, let's see. Yeah, there are, there are six of them. We have early graduations, some students that have applied for early graduation, three of those that we want to approve. We're abolishing a policy. This policy is one that is no longer current because it required action by the district, which is now being taken by the state instead regarding working documents for students. Now, the parents complete, send them to the state rather than them going through the district. All right. We have a new policy for established teams for emergencies that may occur. All right? For threat assessments. So, the school threat assessment team is now a policy, and as threat assessments are identified, the team comes into action to deal with them. And this is defined in Policy 2149. We're having a first reading. We have two new clubs that have been performed. Item 16 proposed. Mr. Brandt showed, talked to us about them. The two clubs are Amnesty International Club and the K-Pop Club. Item 17 is a statement of the Annual Nursing Services Plan. And I must say, after reading it, I was totally impressed with the scope and the quality of the nursing program at the high school. It's, it is comprehensive. It is individualized, and covers an extreme range of needs of the students from, all the way from a cut on your finger to a personal problem that is affecting them and their physically. We also, and item 1.8, one of our staff had a research project, and we're continuing to support it, and he will be continuing to develop it in the system. Item 19 is our corporate sponsor program, which we have, we authorize every year and generates money and projects to benefit the district. Item 110 is our membership in the, in the New Jersey State Inter-Scholastic Athletic Association for our sports. This requires us to become a member, and we authorize it. This requires us to become a member, and we authorize it every year. And let me see, I think, ah, yes. And number 11, we have a foreign exchange student from Italy who we're going to accept into the district, who has given us an extensive amount of information, and it seems like a very worthy young man, and we'd like to approve him. So I'd like to move items 1 dot 1 through 1 dot 11.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on any of these items?
Sure. Just one or two quick points. The threat assessment team policy is the result of a state law that was actually meant to go into effect last year, but they postponed it until this coming year. But not content with that, Mr. Brandt has been getting a head start on organizing and implementing the required teaming that goes into, into those, into the threat assessment protocol there. Also, there's been countywide conversation about working more closely with the prosecutor's office on some of those items. And I also want to echo your point, Mr. Davidson, on the nurses. Nurses are, our nurses are amazing, an amazing group of folks, and they, the way we have them structured, we have a nurse for each grade level. They sit on the grade level team. So not only are they there to receive students who might be having an issue, but they're also there in a really proactive way to help determine appropriate interventions and supports for some of our students who, who, you know, working with counselors, working with our vice principals, working with Mr. Brandt, you know, they're just, they're an amazing group of folks. Carol Webb oversees them and just grateful to her work and their work, especially over the past few years. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else have comments or questions? Ms. Kellogg?
Quick question. The policy that we're abolishing and the policy on first reading both have the same number. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's nothing more than just a technical decision on the part of our policy vendor and just how they assign the numbers. But again, the working papers are now running through the state, so we don't even touch those any longer. So we no longer need a policy on working papers. But yet, it struck me as odd, too. It was the exact same number.
I guess they didn't want to have a blank policy number in that book.
They eliminated one and slid one right back in. All right. Any other comments or questions?
I do count policies at night to try to get to sleep, and that would have been a break in.
Anything else? Okay. Can I have a motion? I'm sorry, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Fowler, can we have an update on operations and transportation, please?
Absolutely. So happy first month of the year from a school board perspective. That's why we have 19 items for ONT this month, never to be asleep, operations and transportation. I'll still try to run through it as quickly as possible while being concise. We have our financial reports back from May, two months delayed as normal. That is standard. We have our invoices and our transfers for the month of June. With number four, we have a $20,155 donation for Chromebook purchases for new Chromebook devices for the year. We have with number five, established the parking permit price for the year. It's the same as $19.95, so we're handling cost very well in this regard at least, at $75. Number six, we are renewing our membership with New Jersey Schools Insurance Group. Number seven, we're getting a Chromebook donation to accept five used Chromebooks. Number eight is an extraordinary aid motion to accept extraordinary aid from the state of New Jersey, a very large amount, $823,490. We, for number nine, have a non-public school transportation aid that we're accepting from the state of New Jersey, the amount of $35,568. We have our tax levy to the township of Reddington as number 10. There was an adjustment in how they receive money and how they disperse money out to us. I'm not going to go into the details, other than this is the correct amount that's reflected on the agenda. Number 11 is refunds back to our capital reserve. So these are two projects that are completing. So the first is a loop repair project back from Hurricane Ida. There was money that we took from the capital reserve to fix that, $99,880. You'll see that in the next item, number 12. Our offices have done a wonderful job in working with FEMA to get some of that money back in our pocket, and then a refund of $2,025.78 for the IMC renovation now that that project is complete. Number 12 is the FEMA aid that we were able to get back. Congratulations to the administrative staff. I know that that was like a year and a half's worth of work and fighting with FEMA to get that money, so we appreciate that effort. 13 and 14 are two purchase, two items for purchase. One is three 29-passenger school vans, and the other one is three 54-passenger school buses. We do that every single year. We purchase three of each basically to continue with depreciation and cost. And then 15 and 16 is our ongoing agreements and jointure with East Danwell Township and Delaware Township to provide busing and services for their students. 17 is establishing the ESY routes that are going to be contracted through CRAP. And 18 is two of our professional service providers that we're, we're accepting, one for $300 an hour, one for $120 an hour for educational literacy and physical therapy. And finally, 19 is a refund from our maintenance reserve fund for a project that also just finished with HVAC. So I'm moving items 1 through 19.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler and Mr. Davidson. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions on the items on ONT? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Mrs. Bloodfield, can we have an update on personnel, please?
Sure. We have 18 items on the personnel agenda tonight, which actually means we have a late agenda. We'll start with item one. We have the resignation of Kathleen Herman from her duty release aide position, and that's because last month we approved her to become the operational assistant for Mr. Thornton. We have five contractual appointments in number two, and as Dr. Moore already stated, that leaves us in very good position. We only have one open position still left. We have some hourly appointments. You'll see some summer student workers and trainer giving workshops and a few others. We have our summer curriculum writing in number four. Number five, we have new teacher staff induction and mentoring coordinator that we're approving, and that's a grant-funded effort to overhaul the district's new staff mentoring program, which will be for all staff regardless of prior experience. Then we have in number six, special services, summer child study teamwork. We have some professional development. Number eight, we have the mechanic ASE certification stipends that we are approving, and that's per our HCEA contract. Number nine, we have a few remaining Schedule D coaches we are approving. 10, some salary guide advancements. 11, the, an HCAA administrator credit advancement, who is now Dr. Twizzler, so congratulations to him. 12, we are rescinding two professional development project appointments, and that's due to a change in availability. We have one more proctor, monitor, test coordinator appointment in number 13. Then we have two more substitute bus drivers for the next school year. Number 15, we have a policy for first reading, earn sick leave law, and that was due to a change in the law, that we, we need to have this policy in place. 16, we have a couple of amendments. 17, we are approving a staff member for, a staff member for diversity, equity, inclusion professional development project. And then finally, 18, we have an increment withholding. With that, I will move personnel, items 1 through 18.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes, for 1 to 17, no for 18.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes, for items 1 through 17, no for item 18.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All motions carry.
Thank you. Ms. O'Donnell, do we have an update for racism, equity, and diversity?
Just briefly, the committee met last week, and we were presented with a lot of really useful data from, from Dr. Moore, and, you know, looked at that data to see where implementation needs to happen, you know, what more do we need to be capturing, and how are we aligning, you know, programs and acts in the school along with the CARES policy. We also have a really great sampling of tools that you sent us, Dr. Moore, to, to assess the efficacy of, of the policy being implemented. So that's really all that I have for tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Moore, do you have anything to add?
Only that we're, the, the steering committee for that policy, which is reliant upon, you know, staff participation and student participation, we're, we're putting a lot of pieces in place for that. That's where a lot of this data is going to go.
Thank you. So there's no action on that? Communications, Mrs. Kellogg?
Mrs. Tucker put together an excellent presentation on all of the communications pathways that the, the district uses, including the website and social media accounts and our direct SMS and email blasts. And we spent most of the hour with her reviewing how those communication tools are used, how many clicks we get on the website, where folks are getting information from. And at the end of that presentation, we decided to use it as a framework, one to look at the end-of-year communications this year as a case study of how effective those tools are. And then we'll also go into review Mrs. Tucker's report before the next meeting and ask for any additional information or insights or ways that we can leverage the tools that we're currently using.
So I know Mrs. Tucker is watching now, and I just want, she's not here, but she's, I'm sure she's watching because she's always, you know, checking our feed, making sure it's out, going out strongly. Committee has asked that she do a presentation here on some of the data that she presented in the committee, so I'll be working with her on that.
Thank you. And was this the month that communications met twice?
That was last month.
That was last month, okay. I know we've met a lot in the last few months.
Yes, so we've met three times in the past two months, and I think the last month we had the two meetings on the minutes.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, additional board business. Does anybody have any committee or liaison reports from either within or outside of district? I just want to update the Board again on retreat status. We've had two meetings, ad hoc retreat committees, had two meetings. We've talked about separating, as we traditionally do, into two half-day sessions, one day to work on board goals, which we need to do before the school year begins so that we can vote on them in hopefully September, so that we have our roadmap for the year. And then a second day to work more on board governance issues, inter-board communications and the like. We have talked to Judy Wilson, who's done retreats for us the past two times, in January for our mid-year retreat and last summer, to help us work on board goals, and we have that tentatively scheduled for August 28th, so I just want to remind everybody of that. We're looking at later in the day to accommodate work schedule, so either a four or five o'clock start time. We've also explored the possibility, New Jersey School Boards offer sort of a free goal-setting presentation. They're not, they're a bit off in the summer, so they're not available as much, so we're waiting to hear back from them. And what we're looking to do is possibly do that by Zoom in advance of our August 28th meeting to sort of kickstart our thought process on goal-setting for this year. So we're waiting to hear back from school boards to see if there's a representative who can, maybe by Zoom, just because summer's a difficult time for scheduling as it is, give a presentation just to kickstart that thought process for us. So stay tuned for that. We would be looking to do that in advance of the August 28th meeting and hopefully at the end of July, which I know is a little sticky for some folks, but you'll be hearing from me with dates as soon as I hear back from school boards on that. As for the second half day, Mrs. Duggan and Mr. Fowler have offered to try to reach out to some different folks, professionals, who can sort of guide us through that process a little bit for board governance goals and sort of communication issues, and we're waiting to hear from some of those folks on that. Again, we're getting a little bit late in the summer, so we're hopeful to schedule something that last week of August, because everybody seems to be sort of back in the swing of things, particularly from the district standpoint, the school year will be starting again. So we will likely, if we're able to find somebody for that second day, schedule it later in the week of August 28th. So stay tuned for more dates, but as of now, August 28th is really the only date we have sort of set in stone. Anybody have any thoughts or comments on retreat? Is there anything I left out? No? Okay. Any additional board business on any topic? Yes, Mr. Fowler?
Two questions. First is for Red Committee. When you eventually get through reviewing the data that was presented, if much like committee, the communications committee, we could see some output of that, that would be awesome, that we could see that. And then just a side comment while going through the agenda, it looks like one of our board correspondences was truncated. So Dr. Moore, I don't know if you want me to share that with you afterwards or what, but it...
We'll take a look.
Okay.
But we'll, we'll, if that's the case, we'll have it corrected in the minutes, and we'll get an updated copy out to all of you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
You're talking about on the link, Mr. Fowler? On the PDF?
Yeah, when I look at the PDF, it's a, it's a correspondence to Dr. Moore to have something presented to us, but there's no meat and potatoes. There's no actual content from the person that sent it.
I may have that printed in my folder, so after we'll take a look and see if it's there for you.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay.
Can I, a quick comment?
Yeah, sure.
The, just so you know, in the Red Committee minutes, you do have a link to all the data that was discussed there, but as we continue to move forward, one of the projects is to update the webpage associated with that committee, so we'll be putting that together. And after the next communications, I think you have Mrs. Tucker's slide deck in the minutes, but her presentation to the Board will be, will be most notable. Her, is her presentation in the, it's not in the minutes? All right, we'll get, we'll get you a copy of her slide deck as well.
Any other board business? Okay, with that, we'll move into our second resonance forum. This is for general comments on any topic. Again, same rules, five minutes. Come up to the mic, state your name, town, and you will get a warning at four minutes with one minute remaining. I should say a notification at four minutes, a warning sounds ominous. I know, it sounds ominous.
Hi, Mary McBrien, Kingwood Township. I'd like also to address the Tanko v. Moore issue lawsuit, and my concern is, as a taxpayer for the financial liability to the school board and the taxpayers in general, from what I've heard, this lawsuit has, not the lawsuit, the case against Tanko, has not violated any law or even policy of the Board, and with no violations and no actual harm. I'm not sure what the basis is for taking away his, part of his income, and I'm concerned for the financial liability of retaining an attorney. And normally, in a case against a municipality, an individual might not have the resources to carry on a lawsuit for very long, but I think with a contentious political issue like that, it might attract donations or even attorneys looking to make a name for themselves. And even, should the Board win, there would still be very high attorney fees, and if they lose, there would be a judgment as well as those same attorney fees. So I'm thinking maybe this isn't the case, given the relatively flimsy bases to invite... So I'm thinking maybe this isn't the case, given the relatively flimsy bases to invite possibly, it seems fairly certainly, long-term lawsuit. So just for that financial consideration, I would urge you to look at the accusations against Mr. Tanco very closely and see if they're actually worth taking on the liability of a long-term lawsuit. Thank you.
Jim Vargas, Kenrington Township, Long Island, Mahomet Beach. Now, I want to pop on one thing, somewhere I was talking that were dangers, and I wanted to do under sex ed standards. A large training part is a training called the maze, which is produced by Planned Parenthood and produced out of Rutgers University. In this training, they deal with three areas that I'll touch on. One is masturbation, and what they talk about in there is saying, you can do as much as you can, it doesn't matter. But the way it proposed itself, you could walk out of a, take a masturbation break rather than a smoking break. It's kind of crazy. Then they address pornography, and in pornography, they say there's no, pornography's okay to watch, just don't take it seriously. And we know pornography is addictive, we know that it attacks young people. And the third thing was around abortion. And when they go into it, they talk about abortion, and they basically say, well, there are really no bad side effects. And I know, I work with post-aborted men, and I've seen post-aborted women, and they're real serious things, they don't treat it properly. And then they turn around and they attack the pregnancy resource centers. These are the little stores, like the one down here on Main Street, they give out people diapers, they give them food and those type of things, right? But these are the things that are really important to people. Back when COVID happened, they closed, I worked, I had a, we worked with a food country out of my parish, they closed us, they closed the little family store, pregnancy center, but they left Planned Parenthood open. And people were deprived of diapers and food and stuff. We found a way around it, but it took some time to do it. There are a lot of dangers going out there. The second thing I would like to say is, I would, I listened to the lawyer's letter, and I do see a lot of that in this board, where people who believe one view are given breaks, they can say what they want and have a voice, and other people are punished, the latest one being Paul Tanco. The last thing I'll talk about is other boards. This is probably about the 20th board I've been in front of or listened to in the last six months. Boards are fighting all over the place, they're dodging, some have said, I'm not going to implement certain standards, some are doing more. As you know, the Attorney General has sued certain boards, I was at Hanover a couple weeks ago, and there's a lot going on, okay? What I see in this board is probably the strongest with what they call a left bent, and I just have to say that. There's not a lot of balance here. I see people trying to get balance in other boards, I don't see it. And it's so important to me that in my hometown now, or where my home residence is, in Mahomet Beach, I built, I'm building an organization, signed it on the senator, as you know, we have a senator, and then two legislators in there. I'm reaching out to every faith-based Catholic Protestant Jewish Coptic church, anybody that wants to, and we're going to build an organization that is parent-driven and that they actually attend. We identified all the school boards there, they're going to actually become involved in proper way with the school boards. And I always, I don't understand why, I guess because I wasn't here, why kids were here, but why not more parents a part of this? Because we're in a really hard time of change, and the board is the one that really is between us and the government. It is said that we're homeschool rule, but this government is not doing anything like that, and it really takes a lot to stand up to it. So I think it's some pretty tough times, but I wanted to share that with you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Can I speak again? Am I allowed to? I am? Why am I?
If no one else wants to speak, and we're within our 30 minutes, we started at 8:03, yep?
I'm going to just take a minute. First of all, after listening to this woman speak, I wish I could come back and take some of those classes, because they're really interesting.
Could you please just state your name again?
Oh, I'm Teresa Malia again, from Reddington Township.
Thank you.
I mean, it sounds wonderful, but on the flip side, I also see what's happening in the community, and it's kind of scary. You know, I don't think kids are presented with the truth a lot of the times. I think they're being rushed into decisions that they're incapable of making. Science has proven that boys' brains do not develop fully until their mid-20s, so how can you ask a child who's 13, 14, 15 to make some life-changing decisions that they're really incapable of making? Anyway, now to flip the, flip the subject a little bit, as a taxpayer, I agree with what Mary said, I don't want my taxes going to support a lawsuit. You know, I know Paul personally, and I've known Paul for probably 25 years. He is probably the most meek, gentle, loving, caring guy you'd ever want to meet. He has actually had prisoners that he arrested when he was a police officer come back and thank him when they've gotten out of jail. They thanked him. I mean, this guy is so compassionate. He's not on any Facebook, any social media at all, I know that for a fact. He took the picture, he said he did. He never posted it, he never did anything malicious with it. Somehow down the chain, and we all know how the, you know, the old telephone game goes, somebody got hold of it and somebody did something with it, but it wasn't Paul. And he was probably horrified to hear that it ever went that way. He actually has firsthand experience in his own family with different, diverse thinking and diverse ways of life, and I don't want to go into his personal life, but this is right in his own family. You know, he's a great guy. And again, just as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for a lawsuit that you guys are going to lose. You're going to lose it. I mean, the evidence is right there, it's his free speech. He was allowed to take a picture, all these other people took pictures, and yet he's being penalized for it. That's it, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, with that, we will close our second resonance forum. Do we have any board comments? This is your last chance, we have no executive session tonight. Really?
No.
Okay, no board comments. With that, since we have no executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.[1001.75]